Hear me? I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners meeting this evening for the purpose of going over the budget. This is a budget hearing, and we will introduce ourselves first and then move forward.
Leslie Hervey, interim clerk.
Commissioner Alicia Reese, vice president of the commission.
Good evening. I'm county commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Alito, county administrator.
Teresa Tilly, I'm assisting with the Zoom and PowerPoint.
Thank you. Stephanie Semeroldum is president of the commission board. And the purpose of this evening is to really look at our budget that we have been presented by our administrator and his staff. It is a draft budget, and Jeff will be talking more about it, but we want to hear your concerns, suggestions, comments, anything that you think we've missed. We certainly want to look at those items and consider them before we have our final hearing, which will be December the 2nd, and that will be at Todd Fortune Center. And then we will hopefully pass the budget either the 14th or the 16th. So you're welcome, when we get started, to come up and give any comments that you may have. So we will start with our administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. As we did at the last public hearing, I'm going to tag team this with Assistant Administrator Brugan, but just wanted to walk through a few points about the 2022 recommended budget, if I can get the slide projector to work. So first of all, the all-funds budget is recommended at $1.1 billion. The general fund budget is $313.4 million. So the county's budget, the general fund budget, is the primary operating fund of the budget, but the all-funds budget does include numerous other restricted funds, including things like job and family services, or transient occupancy tax, enterprise parking revenues, and dozens of other funds that all total $1.1 billion. Teresa?
Excuse me. How could I forget how we're ready to get here and getting the permission to come to Forest Park and use this beautiful facility? And how could I forget our mayor, Charles Johnson? He may have a few words to say before we even get started. So thank you so much for accommodating us.
Good evening, and welcome to Forest Park. Forest Park is always glad to have people from the county come to us, to speak with us, and to tell us what they have to offer, as well as to tell us what they're going to give us. And hopefully, when the evening is, when you all are done, we will have come to, we can come to expect that that's going to continue. Forest Park, as you may know now, I'm sure all of you do, based on the last census, we are now the second-largest city in Hamilton County. We're very proud of that. We're growing. We're growing by leaps and bounds, but more importantly than that, Forest Park is one of the most diverse communities, not only in the county and in the state, but in the country. And that's, we take great pride in that. So welcome to Forest Park. Hope you have a good meeting, and we're here to serve you in any way we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President, we...
Well, I was trying to see if our...
That's what I was wondering, yes.
He's fairly good, and he's still here.
Yeah, I will.
And doing some great things. Thank you, Jeff.
I'll be really quick. Good morning.
Greetings. I just want to echo exactly what the mayor said, that we're happy to host you folks here this evening. It provides great access for our community and the people here in the northern suburbs to have an opportunity to interact directly with our commissioners and our county government, and to express our goals, our needs, and our wants, and our desires. So hopefully, this gives everyone an opportunity. We have with us tonight Waycross Media, who is filming this and will be showing it on TV as well, on the local channels. So we want to remind everyone that if they didn't catch this live, of course, it'll be replayed and replayed and replayed and replayed forever. So again, we want to thank you all for showing up. We are a growing community. We're a very diverse community, and we're very proud of that. And we're very proud of the strides we've made over the last several years with Chuck Johnson as our mayor, and Mayor Dumas as well before that. And with the help of the county, we look forward to working with you to locate as many services as we can out here. So we've talked with Administrator Jeff Alito, and we hope to continue those discussions to bring services out here into the northern counties, or to the northern part of the county, not only for Forest Park, because we think we're the most centrally located and the best location, of course we think that, and I think we can prove it, but also because of the need that's out here, the folks that live out here, the number of folks that are growing out here, and this is where the county's at, and we hope to be able to get some services, locate them here in Forest Park, and be a home for the county and much of their services here into the future. So again, thank you for coming.
Thank you. So we will jump back into the budget presentation. Again, the all-funds budget at $1.1 billion is recommended, general fund budget $313 million. The general fund budget, again, is the primary operating fund of the county, with other restricted funds added in to make up the all-funds budget total. I'm now going to turn it over to Assistant Administrator Brugan to walk through some of the details. John, I've got the clicker. Just tell me, and I'll drive.
Oh, terrific, terrific. Jeff, you mentioned a couple of the major funds here. There are actually 83 restricted funds in the county, so this is a pretty high-level summary of the all-funds budget. We have the general fund and the 83 restricted funds. Jeff mentioned the job and family services. That second bar up there is a substantial portion of our county budget. And then going down from there, everything from stadiums and parking operation, which includes the debt service on both of our stadiums, to developmental disability services, which is levy-funded, property tax levy-funded, all the way down to the lowest number we have on here, $7.1 billion worth of funding for the zoo, from the zoo property tax levy. But, you know, many other things included in here, various, the other property tax levies, and judicial funds, and our engineer's office, which does road and bridge maintenance throughout the county. Next slide. Now zeroing in on the general fund, this is the revenue that makes up our county's general fund, sort of our standard checking account, where we can pay any expenses that are necessary. Sales tax is the largest piece of that, and we're expecting sales tax growth to slow down a bit in 2021. We've seen, or in 2022, we've seen very, very strong sales tax growth in 2021, be that pent-up demand from the pandemic period to the federal money that is currently pulsing through our economy. We're expecting relatively stable property tax revenue, which is our second-largest revenue source. Going further down that list, our fourth-largest source is intergovernmental revenue. A key factor there is that it includes, I think for the first time, in a calendar-year budget, a 100% reimbursement from the state for our public defender operations. Real estate fees, we're assuming that market's going to slow down a bit as well, but we continue to see that market slow a bit from where we have been at this very, very high level in 2020 and 2021. Court fees and fines are also somewhat suppressed by the pandemic. We've had some court closures in the last year. We're expecting those to probably not rebound fully in 2022. And of course, we're looking at following interest rates and earnings, although we're hearing that we could see a rate increase mid-year, next year, so that could turn around a bit. On the expense side in the general fund, just a few high-level numbers. Our criminal justice expenses are 75% of the general fund, so that's all of the court operations, the sheriff's office, the prosecutor's office, the public defender's office. Criminal justice services are a core part of what we do in the county's general fund budget. We're also very heavy on personnel. 68% of expenses in the county's general fund are personnel. In 2022, we are actually seeing an unusual thing. We're seeing health care costs come down slightly. We've made some cautious investments in our self-insurance fund, and are actually able to pull down our employer cost for health care for next year. And Jeff will talk a little bit about this later, but we are seeing an increase, an intentional increase in capital equipment and repairs to invest in a lot of the building and equipment stock at the county that have had, you know, minimal investments in the last decade. Wanted to talk a little bit about our general fund reserve. This is the cash on hand that the county holds. We're projecting a $61 million reserve at the end of 2021, and going into 2022, just under 20% in reserve. $61 million sounds like a big number, but that's about where a county in a budget of our size should be for basic cash flow and to insulate against financial shocks or unplanned activity that should happen on the revenue or expense side. You want to have at least two months' worth of operating expenses covered in your reserve, and that's right where we are projecting in '21, '22. And Jeff, I think you're taking it back over.
Thank you, John. So just walking through some additional points about the budget, there were some policy goals that went into framing this budget, everything from financial stabilization to responding to COVID, public safety, economic and community development, supporting vulnerable populations, strengthening management systems, inclusion and equity, addressing capital needs and supporting human capital needs. I'm just going to walk through these very briefly. First of all, on the public safety side, the budget supports the operations of the sheriff, 911, the courts, the coroner, and the crime lab, and the prosecutor, and allows us to do things like some of our diversion programming, like our law enforcement assisted diversion program, our electronic monitoring program, as opposed to simply incarcerating folks so we can make better use of Justice Center capacity, our sheriff's police, peace officer academy to help retain sheriff's deputies in our jail and our correction system, and keeping our 911 detail rate low at $5 per detail, which I know is of importance to many of our community partners, including Forest Park, who pays a detail rate to the county, and a previous time, that detail rate was as high as $16 to $20. We now have that down to $5, which will save communities across the county roughly $3 million a year. In economic development, the budget supports our partners, such as the Hamilton County Development Company, the Port Ready, and OKI, and our economic development programming. The board heard a good deal about this at our staff meeting yesterday, where we went in depth into some of our economic development programming. But in 2022, the recommended budget supports a community revitalization grant of $1.5 million, a community impact program at $1 million, the creation of a new small business office, and a site readiness program of $2 million to help prepare large sites in the county for redevelopment, investment, and job readiness. Supporting vulnerable populations, a significant portion of our all-funds budget includes work to address the needs of vulnerable populations in the community. It supports the Office of Job and Family Services, Veteran Services, all of our levy work plans, as well as our American Rescue Plan implementation. So all of the activities in JFS, children's services, our kinship programming, even adult protection services, public assistance, all funded out of JFS. Our 513 relief operations pictured here in the picture through the American Rescue Plan. In 2022, we're going to be reviewing three separate levies that are planned for the ballot in 2022. That includes senior services, mental health, and indigenous care. And there's also included in this budget the recommendation of a new youth office to help coordinate and streamline our youth programming and to expand youth employment programming and youth services throughout the county. The budget supports the improvement of just general efficiencies and general government operations, and financial planning for major system improvements. For instance, it includes the streamlining of our government affairs work through the bringing on a government affairs coordinator, and it includes planning for capital investment in some of our major systems, like our jail management system, finance system, and the recorder system. There will be a lot of capital work that continues to occur in the county under this recommended budget. It includes progress on deferred capital maintenance in the county, as well as other outside capital projects. Just a brief note, our 10-year deferred capital program still has roughly $300 million of capital needs in it. So we still have a lot of work to do catching up on some deferred maintenance from past years. But other things, consolidation of our 911 EMA facilities, advancing bank slot 28 in the Black Music Walk of Fame, looking at satellite office development through our American Rescue Plan funding, a new parking facility in the Findlay Market area, and $3 million in deferred capital maintenance. Inclusion and equity, the budget supports funding for the Department of Economic Inclusion and Equity in many of our community engagement efforts. So for example, it will include the continuation of our economic disparity study. It will also, it also includes a $250,000 earmark for disparity study initiatives in advance of the conclusion of that study. So if there's things that the board wants to move forward on in advance of the conclusion of the study, we have money put aside for that, and also staff for additional inclusion compliance within departments. On the human capital side, we have funding, the human capital side of the budget funds everything from compensation and benefits to attract and retain the county workforce. Just as a note for folks who may be watching, we have 2,446 employees under the general fund, and 4,669 employees in all funds. So when you look at all county employees, we are roughly a 4,700 FTE operation. The budget includes a 3% wage adjustment for non-bargaining staff, market compensation adjustments under the Board of County Commissioners offices, and departments, additional staff development, and the re-institution of our tuition reimbursement program. There are some budget risks, as there are in any budget. Assistant Administrator Brugan mentioned a potential slowdown in sales tax growth. We've built that into the budget, but it is still a risk. Financial downturn is always a risk, as we're continuing to see inflation, as well as always, departmental budget noncompliance, as we see certain needs within some of the mandated services of government that sometimes we don't have direct control over. Sometimes expenditures can rise above projected levels in some of these departments. I did just want to point out a couple of different notes, just a couple of things broadly about the budget. Some of these points were mentioned in some recent media about the budget, but the county's budget, as we look at it today, when adjusted for inflation, if you go back to 2008, we are still at or below where we would have been adjusted for inflation. The budget is fairly consistent on a per capita basis with where, what we see in other Ohio large urban municipal governments. Our general fund reserve, as Mr. Brugan pointed out, is healthy for the first time in really over a decade, but it's not out of proportion to industry standards or to our prudent investment needs. So I just wanted to make a couple of those points. Our financial path looks definitely healthier, but certainly not opulent. We still have some challenges ahead. Mentioned some budget risks here, one that's not on here that the board has been hearing over and over and over again as we go through budget discussions in our staff meeting, is the operational difficulty of losing employees. We have an industry-wide, whether it's in the public sector or private sector, challenges keeping employees. We're seeing more employees leave for higher-paying jobs, whether it's in the private sector and other jurisdictions. So this is going to keep the pressure on the county to respond to those and ensure that we continue to ensure that the county is a place where people, that the county's a place where people want to live, but also an organization which people want to work and spend their, and bring their talents and spend their careers. So with that, Madam President, commissioners, I'll turn it back to you for the remainder of the hearing. This is our final external public hearing. We do have a final hearing down at the administration building, the Todd Fortune Center, on Thursday, December 2nd, at 1:15. And obviously, we will continue discussion in board staff meetings on functional areas within the budget between now and December 14th, when we have tentative board approval planned.
Jeff, could you speak to a balanced budget versus, not versus, but a structurally balanced budget and a balanced budget? Because we're structurally balanced.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Madam President. Happy to. So yeah, in the past, for folks who may be watching at home, in the past, the county, we have always balanced our budget, but the budget has been balanced many times at the end of the year on drawdown on reserves, or with, we cannot project in future years for available resources to meet the needs of the county, whether it's our deferred maintenance needs, our needs as it relates to employees, or the policy direction and the policy needs in direction of the Board of County Commissioners. So through the incorporation of the quarter cent sales tax that the board approved in 2019, we saw the first year of that, the first year of that rolling on in 2021. We'll continue that in 2022. We have been able to structurally right-size the county budget, the county government operations, and ensure that all of those things, whether it's the addressing the basic traction and retention need of employees, addressing our major capital needs and system needs, addressing our public safety systems, to ensure that we are operating a public safety system that includes more than just incarceration, but includes reentry and diversion around the criminal justice system, to make sure that we're partnering with our external communities, as we heard from the mayor and city manager earlier, to make sure that we have the resources to partner effectively and prudently with our jurisdictions. All of those things are enabled through a structurally balanced budget. So yes, we are in a different position than we have been in previous years. It is a healthier county, again, not without its financial challenges and headwinds, but we are a financially healthier county than we have been in years. So yes, thank you for the opportunity to expand on that.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, John, and thanks, everyone who's here. At this time, I'd like to, we do have a speaker's card, and I'll certainly call you to come up first, but if anyone has any comments as it relates to the presentation or any other things that affect the budget, you're welcome to come up. We have Ken Nagel. Welcome. We have two minutes.
All right. President DeMoss and commissioners, I didn't realize I was going to be up first. I wouldn't say, I'd been commenting in recent weeks while you guys have been doing hearings online, and I noticed, and I commented about the fact that there's lots of money for the living, but there is no money whatsoever for the dead. And I know that may seem strange, but as a local tour guide and a travel website operator, let me remind you of a statement that Benjamin Franklin once said, "Show me your cemeteries, and I will tell you what kind of people you have." Well, I could tell you, over the last five years, I've traveled to 1,200 cemeteries in 22 states, and about 80% are the ones in the tri-state here. And as a pretty much a recognized cemetery expert, I feel uniquely qualified to say that it's painfully obvious in the state of Ohio that we have pathetic cemetery laws, arguably some of the worst in the state. Now, in recent months, the state of Ohio has passed a plethora of cemetery legislation, but that's all about active cemeteries, zero about neglected or abandoned cemeteries. Now, by law, state law, municipalities and townships are required to maintain them, but there's no technical definition of what maintain means. So most cemeteries are lucky if they're cut, the grass is cut just a couple of times a year. I think it's a bad way we're treating veterans, pioneers, some of the early residents of the Cincinnati area. You know, a lot of examples really close to home here that have been vandalized or neglected. We can talk about the Wesleyan Cemetery, that's constantly talked about, the new projects that's going on with the Potter's Field, United American, Fulton Presbyterian, being one of the first cemeteries, that is just neglected, sitting in a corner. Now, a lot of this gets handled in the city, it gets pushed over to the Parks Department. Parks people aren't qualified to take care of cemeteries, they're qualified to take care of parks. Cemeteries aren't necessarily parks. Now, I think the solution to this is for the county to create a cemetery commission. Now, I...
Finish yourself.
Okay. A cemetery commission, it's a new idea in the state of Ohio. Actually, several of the neighboring states, like Indiana, already have existing commissions that operate through, like, the Department of Natural Resources. Ohio, again, does not have this. Now, I'm hoping that Hamilton County might become a leader in this and possibly create a pilot program that the rest of the state can follow, because some of the amazing things is the fact that mapping, most people don't even know where some of the cemeteries in this county are. As somebody who searches them out, I struggle to find them. The municipalities don't always know where they are, and mapping is very important, because I want to point out to you guys, you know, if you go to look for some of the cemeteries in town now, and I wanted to ask each one of your commissioners, do you know where Van Zant Road is? I'm just curious, because the only records the county has is the WPA maps. Those were done in 1939. Van Zant Road is Galbraith Road, and it's been Galbraith Road for a really long time. So these are some of the things that can be done, just, you know, the point of a commission would be a variety of just three things. Simply records is going to be one of the main things. Mapping and digitizing burial records for the people that are in this state, because as a matter of fact, right now, the Ohio History Connection in Columbus is working on a project of tracking down all the abandoned African-American cemeteries that are unrecognizable. Some of them are in worse shape than obviously the ones we have in Cincinnati. Another thing, or the last points, would be to create a cemetery preservation courses and standard, because right now, I could come into Hamilton County and work on an abandoned cemetery, nobody would know I'm doing it, they wouldn't know what the standard is, they don't know what the procedures are, because there is no standard. So it would be a matter of creating classes and upbringing qualified instructors, either from the region, which I know there are some in the region, many in the tri-state here, but where people are trained to deal with cemeteries rather than actually just, just something that just gets passed on, because, you know, I mean, I don't, no disrespect to commissioners, but people in cemeteries don't vote, and they often don't get, nobody cares about them, they get ignored. So as a pilot program, yes, I would love to be, you know, I have more information that I could give to you guys, not today, but I have a proposal, I have experts that are ready to testify in front of you guys, whatever need be, but I think this is a very important issue that the budget is really neglecting.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that up. We have not spoken about that or thought about that. I know it's a pioneer cemetery right in the Pleasant Run area that I saw and called about, but thank you for your suggestion, and so we'll consider that and talk about and where we might want to go with it. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Sounds like somebody back there wants to speak, huh? Anyone? Okay. I'll open it up for my colleagues if they have any comments or they would like to make. Vice President Reese.
Yes, I just want to join in thanking the mayor and Forest Park, City of Forest Park, for hosting us tonight. Really appreciate it. Spent a lot of money here in your area. Wanted to just highlight a couple of things that I'm looking at. All of us are going to be asked to look at this as the administration budget and what we might want to add based on what we've heard here, or what we've heard from citizens contacting our offices, or people that we run into on a daily basis. Before I do that, though, I do want to thank the City of Forest Park for hosting our 513 relief bus, not once, but twice here, and a lot of, I got a chance to hear from a lot of people who are in need and hurting, and out of those conversations, I would say, came the feedback of, at that time, we didn't have anything for homeowners, and I was able to take that feedback and bring it back as well. So I do want to thank the residents of Forest Park. And tell them that we heard you, and we do have now $5 million to help from the American Rescue dollars. There are a couple of things I do want to add that I'm interested in, and each of us have things that we're interested in. A lot of them are the same, but some are different. One, you saw on there, a small business office. I really want us to be the number-one county for small business. Small business is the future. People have lost their jobs, have been downsized, and so many of them are going in. People have lost their jobs or been downsized, and so many of them are going into business. Younger entrepreneurs are coming up, and I know we've had some pilot programs with the Mortar Group here. We want to have something that's more permanent, where people call and they can, it's Hamilton County Small Business, and that is our focus, how to retain, recruit, and expand small business. We want to be number one in small business, that is the future. The other thing is technology, and I know that's important to cities like Forest Park. We want to make sure that we have a smart county, we have pockets of the county, that has technology, but not all of it. So we certainly want to do that. And then I've been really pushing for something for senior citizens. We do have a levy, however, that's kind of, that's it, that's the levy. But we didn't know it was going to have a pandemic. Duke Energy Bill's getting ready to go up, I believe, this month. Assessments are higher, and we've got a lot of homeowners in Forest Park. So people are going to get really hit hard. They've got a check that's not going up, but bills are going up. And so want to have something for seniors. Housing, as you saw in there, our commission has put $40 million in housing, $5 million for people that need help right now, but $35 million to look at how do we increase homeownership in the future. And I think that's groundbreaking for our commission, for us as a commission to do that. So we certainly want Forest Park at the table. My last thing is, I had a conversation, and I know you've told, Mayor, you'd have told everybody, but you've hemmed me up everywhere, whether I'm at Kroger's or whether I'm down the street at UDF getting gas, you done caught me everywhere I go to what you said tonight. You were the third largest, now you're the second largest, and you're saying, look, we don't have any services, Hamilton County services, in Forest Park. And when you come to Forest Park, you're near the highways, you can take in some of Springfield Township, Pleasant Run, and it's a good way for people to get to out in this area. And I agree with you, and certainly want to look at this budget to figure out what can we bring to Forest Park. I know there's a potential satellite, but they're going to, you know, may look at all the places, but look at what kind of services we can have here at Forest Park, because I think you raised a legitimate argument and a legitimate concern. So I just wanted to say those things. I'm looking forward, we'll be giving our full report of the budget, but I wanted people out this way to know what we're looking at. And my goal is to get help to the people, because people need help right now. We got people sleeping in their car at 3:00 in the morning, waiting on the 513 bus to show up at 10:00 a.m. And we know that there's homeowners trying to hold on to their homes. So we're trying to do the best we can to bring costs down, to provide relief, and make sure not only are we structurally balanced, but that more importantly, you're able to balance your budget at your house. So those are the things that I'm very concerned about, and I just want to thank you, Mayor, who have contacted me along with a lot of residents. I want to give a special shout-out to Tracy Dillingham, who's a resident here, who's constantly calling me and telling me, don't forget Forest Park. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much for hosting us out here, especially thanks to the mayor and the city manager, both who spoke. It's always good to be out in Forest Park, and we are looking at Forest Park for that satellite site. Nothing's set in stone yet, but it's certainly, if not at the top of the list, it's pretty darn close. So I think that's a great opportunity to expand our services, especially to areas that are a little harder to reach, you know, as far as where most of the services exist now in the city. So, you know, thank you to the gentleman that spoke about the cemeteries, that's a new agenda item for us, we've not heard that before, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I just want to say that, you know, we've sat through a couple budget presentations now already, we've had a couple hearings, and it is striking, we are in a very different place, as Administrator Ludo said. We, a couple years ago, we were cutting like crazy and raising fees, and you all know this about the 911 fee, and we really didn't hit the capacity to do much at all, to be helpful or to stabilize our workforce. And here we are, two years later, in the midst of a pandemic, no less, and we have managed to stabilize the county, pay our employees well, try to remain competitive, try to keep employees with the county, try to make sure that we're providing adequate services to the citizens, and at the same time, partner with local communities in a way that's substantial, keeping the 911 fee down, but also doing some economic development grant work with you. And we've also got a new fund that's been suggested in this budget for, it's like an impact grant, where we really focus on a community and put substantial money there. The ask is for a million dollars for this effort, have a couple of communities participate a year, and really do a deep dive and be helpful. So I think in this budget, this partnership is real and intentional with every jurisdiction, all 49 in the county. And so I just want to say thank you to the administration for listening to the three of us, but also listening to the community as to where the priorities lie and responding to those concerns. And thank you again for having us out here.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. I know when I was running for office and people were saying Hamilton County, they were thinking it was just City of Cincinnati, that Hamilton County is so much larger. I mean, City of Cincinnati is 309, 309,000 people, and we have a total in Hamilton County of almost 830,000 people. So it's a, it's a large component of it, but we talk about the suburbs, and when I can't pass it, and I'm living out here, I'm not out here now, but we need to reach the people that live out here. It's not just about the City of Cincinnati. And so that's why, once again, the satellite office, I launched the initiative to have a satellite office out here, and then we were thinking, well, that'll be good in the West Side and other areas, but I feel very confident that the first one will be here. I've even told Jeff, okay, we'll think of other ones, but let's get this one here, because this is an area that is not really touched, and when I say touched, that so many people are in need. They need to have an opportunity to go where their services are and not make it hard on them. So that will happen. In addition, I had asked each commissioner to submit to the administrator by December the 7th, their budget of what they'd like to have added onto the budget that is not already currently in here. It can be new ideas or just things you want to maintain, so I'm just asking the commission to please follow through on that deadline of December the 7th. But we're doing great things in Hamilton County, we're working well together, we're getting, we have the same vision of, and like you say, there are so many components of this budget, and I can't think of anything we left out other than the cemetery part. But we're just saying, now what else, what else are we missing? I have personally felt like the veterans component of it, we need to do a little bit more, I just need more clarity on what we're doing for veterans. I think we could do much more, but we're working for you, and we will continue to work for you, and I think you'll be very proud of what this budget will produce. And that's all I have. Jeff, did you have anything else?
Something further?
Okay, all righty. With nothing else coming forth, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our budget hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Samara Duma.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Ooh, I like this.